Let me know if you ever want to have that shut down because you want to say something nasty or whatever. The other thing I'm going to do, if you'll forgive me, is I'm going to mute everybody. And that, of course, I will allow you to unmute at will. And that's just to keep the extraneous noise down.
That's why, that's why you mute. Exactly.
Yep. Okay, everybody's muted. You can unmute, unmute at will. Let me do one other thing here and then we'll get started. David, for some reason, it's not allowing me to make a co-host, so. For some reason, it doesn't appear. I need to look into that later.
All right, don't worry about it. I'm here. Push to talk works.
Okay, so. Let's get started. First of all. This is going to be pretty informal. The idea here is we want to listen a lot more than we want to talk. As you're probably aware, Dave and I are capable of talking for long periods. I, I once met Hubert Horatio Humphrey. Some of you may know him when I was a student at UCLA. And I remember he said that he prided himself on the fact that he could talk at any topic. At any length. Whether he knew anything about it or not, and I've kind of. Like doing that. Anyway. So let me start with a couple of introductions. Dave Proper, K2DP is here. He's our Vice Director. Steve Ewald is the supervisor of the. Field Organization. He was on my screen a second ago. Welcome, Steve. As we do more of these events, my intent is to try to have these quarterly, and I'm sorry I didn't start them earlier. I think they're a great idea. We, we can have people from headquarters come in, and we can talk to the CEO, you know, and get questions answered and all that. Dave and I've tried to be transparent and open. We're available. We want to. We're both dedicating our time because we're giving back to a hobby that's been very important to us. I'm Art Zieglebaum, K0AIZ. I'm the Division Director. I'm starting my third year as the Division Director. I've been licensed since 1961 from California. Student of 1961, so been a ham almost 62 years. I like to DX, bit of contesting, rag chewing. I do things. I've done satellites in the past. I want to get back to that. I want to do EME. I haven't done that yet. I do meteor scatter and that sort of thing. Enjoy it. And if you just look at my background picture, I, about two years ago, I decided I wanted one radio. That I, of every type that I had when I was a teenager, either owned or had access to, and I've spent two years collecting. Rebuilding, recapping. And making them work. They all work, and I love, I just had a AM conversation on 15 meters before I. Came up here for this with my Ranger, which, and HQ 180, which is behind me. Great radios. And I will say the one thing about rebuilding old radios, it's, I think it's a lot more fun working on them than on the surface mount stuff. I worry too much for the surface mount stuff. But anyways, I, I will point out that the, the one that I had the most trouble with was the Ranger. I, I, I keep saying the guy who designed it had to be. Designing Chinese puzzles at night as a second job. It was a fun radio to work on. And also for full disclosure. A socially unacceptable language was required in replacing some of the parts in that radio. So. I've been, as I said, Division Director for two years. It's our first town hall. We're going to try to do them quarterly. I'm going to say a few things. I'm going to introduce. Our Vice Director Dave Proper for making some remarks. We have some questions that we want to bring out and for your thoughts and. And then. We want to open it up, talk about what you want to bring up, discuss. Dave and I are here to answer questions. We'll take your suggestions. If we don't know the answer to the questions, we'll find out and get back to you. You know. I, I've really enjoyed being, Ham Radio has underpinned my career. So Jet Propulsion Laboratory for 30 years as an engineer, a manager, and an executive. I've then got sucked to the University of Nebraska where I was a professor and a researcher. And Ham Radio made it possible for me to do all those things. It taught me how to build stuff. It taught me how to troubleshoot. And. Taught me how to communicate about it. So. I really appreciate the hobby, and so I'm spending a good part of my life now giving back. So. On the Midwest Division, I've, as the Midwest Division Director, I've been. Member of the Program and Services Committees for over two years. That's the Board Committee that worries about contests and things like that. I was a member of the Ethics and Elections Committee last year. I am now a member of the Executive Committee, which is the group of five directors who get together between board meetings and. Take care of emergency problems and things like that. And I'm also now a member of the ARL Foundation Board, and right now we're looking at scholarships and applications for scholarships. You know. Something that I want to make sure everybody understands is a Division Director in the ARL is a corporate director for a nonprofit under the laws of the state of Connecticut. It's not a radio club board. It's a, it's a board that's governed by state law. It's also governed by ARL governing documents. We do get involved with things on the Programs and Service Committee where we do work with ARL staff. But primarily, directors are worrying about strategy and policy, not really doing things. Section Managers aren't under us. They don't report to us. They report up to the ARL Field Organization to Steve Wald and his colleagues. But we do have a relationship with the Section Managers. Obviously, we cover the same sections, same geographic area. So I feel very good about some of the things I've been able to accomplish over a couple of years. One is I've gotten to know four section managers who are just delightful, Lee, Matt, Ron, and Cecil, great people to work with. I've enjoyed getting to know many of you at HamFest and club meetings. I love going to HamFest and talking to, talking to people, exchanging stories. Looking at, drooling over equipment that I want and, and finding out what's going on. I'm delighted we survived COVID. We learned to do a lot of Zoom presentations. I don't think this meeting would have happened this way if it hadn't been for COVID. I enjoyed getting to know Dave Proper. Dave Proper has become a good friend, and I enjoy our relationship and working together. I enjoy solving problems. People call me with a subscription problem, or they can't get their whole TW certificate or whatever, and I like tracking down the, the problem and, and getting a resolution. Some of the things I've done on the board, I brought in, I was headed the effort to bring in online elections. So next time we do election. Here in the Midwest, it will be online as well as on paper. Our experience with the online elections in the Southeastern. Division was excellent. Seventy-five percent of the members decided to go out, use online instead of paper. And we had a higher turnout than we had in previous years. One of the things I worked, see if I got, somebody got their audio on? I hear a buzz somewhere. Okay, thank you. Was, oh, one of the things that, that I've been. Concerned about is how should directors and, and section managers work together? They don't report to us. They report to Stevie Wald, as, as I said, and Mike Walters. And you don't want an organization to have two bosses. You, you want a clean. Line of command, if you will. So I put in a motion to have. The Field Services and Emergency Communications Committee consider, how should we interact? And they've kind of up with this cabinet concept. Which is actually something that we've done within the Midwest Division over the past two years. And that is, once a month, we have a meeting, and we meet with our section, Dave and I meet with our section managers. And fortunately, Stevie Wald and his boss Mike Walters occasionally join us. And we talk about what's happening, where they need help, what we can do to help. We ask questions and get some insight, guidance. Before we go to the board meeting, so we can represent the views of the division accurately. And that's worked very well, and we're going to keep doing that. And if any of the section managers who are here want to talk about that, that'd be great. I. Been working, we're starting up a group to improve the, improve the election process itself. The rules for elections are in several different documents. And if you want to run, you got a little, a lot of digging, and it shouldn't be that way, so we're going to clean that up. Things I feel less good about, the Ethics and Elections Committee I was on was probably one of the hardest things I have done. It's a committee that we answer questions about if somebody can do this or that within an election. Can they talk about themselves on the air? And in, in front of a group, can the election year on the air and that sort of thing? And we got all kinds of complaints and had to sort through it and. Warn the people and suggest other ways for them to, to act. We had some issues with board members themselves doing things that were a little untoward. And, you know, it's really hard to be put in a position to, to judge your colleagues and. So I'm, it took a lot of time. There were times when it was 20 hours a week working on that, that committee. It was. Pretty rough. Anyways, I'm sorry I couldn't get to more HamFest and club meetings. And I'm sorry we didn't have all the meetings with assistant directors that I'd planned on. I got really busy. We're going to fix that. And overall, I am very proud of having had the chance to represent you and get to know many of you and. Get your feedback, and I thank you very much, all of you. There's 119 here, and that's, that's incredible. I appreciate that very much. And with that, Dave. K2DP. Over to you.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. And first of all, thank you to all that are on this evening. I, while Art was talking, I just took a scroll through the five pages of the gallery view. To see who is on and to look at the faces and the names and try to put call signs and names together. Good to see some of the folks that I know personally on here. Shout out to those guys. But Art, first of all, thank you for the kind introduction. So as Art mentioned, he spent the last two and quarter years learning about being a director, having served as the Vice Director. Previously under Rod Bloxham, K0DAS. My job was to learn all about ARL as a Vice Director. Pretty much sitting in Art's shoes where he was three years ago. To try to understand the workings of ARL and the organization. And. Whose buttons to push to make things happen, basically, and how to work your way through the organization. You know, it's, it's very much like Congress in a way. They start you off, aside from your normal responsibilities of serving. Your division and each of the four sections that are in our division. They assign you to committees. And you don't get a choice. You know, you're like the junior congressman from Missouri. You get put where you're told, and you do what you're told, so to speak. So it was very interesting. They knew of my, somebody knew of my personal interest in vintage gear. And boat anchors. And so they asked me to take a seat on the Historical Committee, the ARL Historical Committee, which is. Responsible for the collection of, of ARL's historical equipment, as well as various artifacts, everything from. Signed letters from Tyron Percy Maxon, the old man himself. To government documents. Antique government call books. The collection is amazing. And so that's occupied a good part of my time. They also knew that I had a technical background and an RF background, and so somebody said, hey, this guy would make a. I guess somebody said, would make a, a good or reasonable facsimile thereof of. Of a board liaison representative to the RF Safety Committee. And you may recall that last year, the FCC invoked. New RF safety standards, but. To understand that correctly. We really should say it's a new method of measuring RF exposure. The standards themselves, the specifications haven't changed. But the, the management of the methodology. To make those measurements. And obtain accurate field measurements has changed. And so that committee. Which is among the most awesome group of people I've ever met. I'm sitting on this committee with PhDs and MDs. And somehow they allow me to follow along. It's really very humbling experience. These guys are just, is a brilliant group of people, and you can see the work that they've done. Along with Ed Hare. W1RFI, who's the lab manager at ARL. They have done fabulous work in putting together. Easy to follow instructions on how to now implement the new. Measurement methodology and calculations. Then last year. I was added to the Programs and Services Committee. Which Art mentioned that he's also on. I don't know if they realized they were putting both of us on the same committee because we could very easily form a voting block. But no, it, it's really a fun committee which. Covers everything from contests and DX. To just how every program and service at ARL offers. Operates. And evaluates to a point whether these things are good or bad. In other words, not good or bad, but are we serving the membership? Or are we not serving the membership? And if we're not, how do we improve? How do we change what we're doing so that we do better serve our membership? So those three committees keep me extremely busy. And then, of course. You, our members. Keep me relatively busy as well. As Art mentioned, he'll get a call from somebody with a subscription problem. I've gotten calls from people with subscription problems. I've gotten calls with people who have had license renewal problems for various different reasons. And. For the most part, I've been able to find the right folks at headquarters, point them in the right direction, get the right folks connected. To our members and. Provide a service in getting. Their problems resolved. So it's great fun. As Art said, we've been suffering with COVID, of course, and dealing with that. And while we are somewhat through with COVID. I, I might mention that. At the January Board Meeting, which I attended in Hartford. Everything was great. I get home, the day after I get home. Guess who's got COVID? Which then prohibited me from attending. Our Midwest Division Convention here in St. Louis, which was part of. The St. Louis and Suburbans Winter Fest HamFest. So it's still around, and we still have to be careful about it. I had all the protection one could have, including having had it. A year and a half prior. When it first hit, but be that as it may. It's great to see all of you now up at 118. Which is just fabulous. Art and I were talking about this meeting earlier this afternoon, and we said, well, you know. We might have three people there. You know, it's not like a regular political barnstorming meeting where we have. Front people running around saying, hey, everybody get on because Art and Dave are going to be on. So we're very gratified to see that we have 118 folks here that are interested. To ask us questions, and please do. So thank you very much for your time. We're going to open the floor. Art and I did discuss some topics.
Before we do that, let me interrupt for a second and change our agenda just a little bit. I remember one of the things we should have done. And I apologize for not doing it earlier. We have four section managers here. And I want to make sure they get a second to say hello. Ron. Alan, you're, I saw you around here somewhere. Would you like to say hello?
Yeah, good evening to the Midwest Division. I see. Fifteen or sixteen Kansans. At least the calls I recognize, so it's nice to see them. Special hi to Whoa E. Haven't seen Bill in, in ages. Nice to have him on here. Do have some. Cabinet members on here for Kansas. Got our assistant. SM AK0A in Tepica. We got the multi-talented KZRRCJ. In McPherson, our state government liaison. And multiple other hats. So it's nice to have them on here as well. Thank you, Art.
Thank you very much, Ron. I appreciate you being here. And now how about the Iowa Section Manager Lee? Would you like to say hello? You're muted, Lee.
Yeah, good evening to everyone. Hear me now. Yeah, good evening to everyone. It's been a wonderful two years working with Art and David. And didn't take this long to dig in, and we're all heading in the same direction and. What. You're in good hands with, with our. Division. Representatives. And have a good evening.
Thank you so much, Lee. Let's see, next, how about Matt? I saw Matt in here from Nebraska.
Hello, Art, and everybody else in the group. Matt Anderson here, KA0BOJ, Nebraska Section Manager. Enjoying my 47th year in this wonderful hobby. And to Lee's point there, we have an amazing team here, Lee, Ron, and Cecil, section managers who I've. Had the great pleasure of getting to know. I've known Art for. Well, for quite a while. And getting to know Dave, and it's good to see a lot of familiar call signs. I know I've worked a lot of you guys. It's nice to. To put a face to, to the call signs here, and. This is an amazing group. I think we're going to get some good things accomplished as time goes on, and Art, thank you for putting this together.
Oh, thank you very much, Matt. Let's see, Cecil, I saw you in here before our Missouri Section Manager. Are you still here?
I am. I don't know what to tell these folks other than our division has changed immensely since you took over the helm. Your predecessors were good people, did a good job, but you've taken us to another level, so. You know, if they've got a concern about our division, I would. Absolutely tell them that it hasn't been in better hands since I've been involved in. Any leadership or anything with the ARL. You know, I'm grateful for everybody showing up and did, and you know, I think our division is a strong division. And I know that our hams are dedicated hams, and you know, young and old alike, we, we work hard to further our, our hobby. And, you know, getting, getting to know all the other section managers, you know, Matt, Lee, and Ron. Along with the way we do our section manager meetings with Art and Dave and, you know. I, I just don't, there just can't be an upset. It, it's completely changed. It's, it's a great, great division. I think our leadership is fantastic, better than it's ever been. And I think our cooperation and working together has come a long, long way from what it used to be. And it can only grow stronger as long as all our members, you know, work. To, to pull the train with us. I, I think. I think the Midwest Division is going to be something that's remembered for quite some time. But anyway, back, back to you, Art. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for that, and I want everybody to know I did not pay him to say that. But thank you very much. Let's see, we had a hand raised. Jeff. See, Jeff, did you have something? WB0M. Got your hand up.
No, I'm, I'm thick fingers. How about that? Sorry about that, Art.
Not, not a problem at all, Jeff. Glad you're here. All right, I'm going to throw it back to Dave. Dave, we'll continue with our agenda, and thank you for all the section managers and your very nice comments.
Okay, thank you. First of all, Colin Wheatley. Just chatted me. What can we do to help? You, meaning me, Art, myself, to put out regular Division newsletters? So we have been running on a quarterly basis, and literally as we speak, I have. About half of the newsletter completed and expect to complete. This monthly news, our quarterly newsletter. Within the next day or so, after Art has a chance to proofread it. So, but thank you all. That was one of the comments I didn't make. In addition to welcoming our section managers who I saw as I scrolled through and made notes that, oh, Cecil's here, Art's here, Lee is here, Ron, Matt, great. Forgot to say hi to them, but. Thank you all for your contributions to the newsletter. I probably received close to two dozen inputs. And trying to incorporate everything now into a newsletter that won't become the next edition of War and Peace.
Excuse me a second. See, Joe, you've got your hand up. Did you want to add a comment? KG0HG. Yeah, good evening. I didn't want to interrupt what Dave was saying or his thought there. He can finish if you'd like. I just had. Quick question. Okay, Dave, back to you.
Oh, okay. Well, remember to go back to Joe. I'm not seeing the hand go up, by the way, Art is. Well, probably because. You're the only. Host right now, so I'm not seeing it, so you'll have to watch those carefully. But at any rate. It, it takes time, and it takes time, of course, to collect. So if you would like, and I'm asking, posing this to the group because it's a great question. What frequency would you like to see? The newsletters come out? Because, and you don't have to answer, answer now, but we can kind of do a, a quick survey by a show of hands later. Be delightful to get a feeling from you as to what you'd like to read rather than being. Humbled to death by multiple emails. So it's strictly up to you. Let us know what you'd like, and we'll try to respond and be responsive to that. Okay, so as I said, Art, oh, wait a minute now, somebody else has got a chat here. Hang on, let me see. See, when they do this in corporations, they have somebody watching these things. Please mention the Iowa Windlink Nets. IowaWindlink.net. Okay, Bruce WB0GAG. And Muscatine. Okay, Bruce, did you want to say something quickly about that while you have everybody on board? You can go ahead and unmute Bruce. Just hit the spacebar.
Okay, I got it. Yes, actually, there are three things I want to comment on. One of them. The highest. Priority. Is W1AW Portable Iowa Operation. We've got two weeks this year. All part of the Volunteers on the Air activity. If you go to. IowaWindlink.net, which is in the chat. You'll see. Two. IowaWindlink Nets. You'll see on the right side a link to W1AW. Slash zero. For Iowa. Where you can sign up for one of the. Over 2,000 slots. Actually, as many slots as you like. I would love to see Iowa represented heavily. I ran the numbers to get all the bands under 900 megahertz. Covered with all three modes. We need. 358 more operators to take one slot a day for the week. Enough for that, but for the moment. And then there's Volunteers on the Air. There's a link underneath that. Which takes you to that which introduces you. To. That particular exercise, and as a league member. You're worth one point to whoever contacts you, so long as you log. To Logbook of the World. You get people higher up. Like Volunteer Examiner, like I am. I'm worth five points. To somebody who contacts me. Art's worth a lot more.
225. It's the only thing I've done of value.
Not quite, but yes. And of course, it goes all the way up to the League President, which is like 800 or something like that. I'd have to look again. But please. Take a look at that. See what's interesting to you. And especially if you can join in on the W1AW Portable Operation.
You, you might put the link in the chat again, Bruce, so people can, can follow it.
Okay.
Yeah, I hate to bring out the big hook, but I don't want to go much more than six hours, so I'm kidding. I, I was going to say at the beginning, I was going to try to keep this to an hour, but given this many people, it's probably going to be a little longer. And, and as long as I've been interrupted. Joe, you've been hanging on very patiently. Did you want to ask your question?
Yeah, just a quick question. It's, and, and good evening, Art and Dave and the section managers and everybody else. Good. See everybody here virtually in person, and thanks for the hard work you guys are doing. Really appreciate it. My question's around the magazine itself, the printed magazine. I have been a subscriber for a number of years, and I know that. Printing, between printing costs, and I think they've had. Here, after the first year, there was like a change of paper due to paper supply and that kind of thing, but. Do you guys have any intel or any insight in terms of the future of the Mac, the hard printed magazine? I personally, myself, I kind of like holding something. Something in my hand to actually read instead of getting online and doing that, although the electronic copies were kind of nice, but. I, I do like to have a magazine to, you know, put back up on the shelf and that kind of thing. If you have any insight on maybe the future of the magazine and kind of how that looks, that'd be kind of appreciated. Thank you.
Sure. As a matter of fact, the, what was it, this month's QST or was it last month's QST? There was an op-ed by. David Minister. In a 2AA, in a 2AA, I think that's right. Anyway, our, our CEO. So here's what's happening. You're absolutely right. The, the cost of magazines have just gone. Out of sight. I mean, if you think about, I, I like pointing this out. Think about the ARL. We're defending the hobby. We're representing it in so many venues, international congress, the FCC. We're providing technical support. Any of you can call the ARL Lab and get help. We're doing all this stuff. And we have a few magazines, and we're charging you $49. If you want to get just CQ, that's $42. If you're like me and a member of the IEEE, before I became so old, they're giving it to me for free. I would pay $200 a year for their magazine and support. So ARL, UST has been a real bargain for years. The cost has gone up. We've had trouble getting paper. You've seen the change in the quality of paper. That's simply because they, they're, they ran. That's simply because they, they're, they ran out of sources and they had to find paper that they could get and publish at reasonable rates. So they're going to have to raise dues or do something in order to cover the increasing cost. You know, I, I, I point out that $49 is less than a dollar a week. So it's not that much money. But to answer the question, the, one of the things they're thinking through and no decisions have been made, and I'd love to hear your, your thoughts on it. Um, is that $49 or something similar, it may go up a little bit, will cover the cost of membership and include access like you have now to all the manuals, all, all the magazines, um, online. You can read any of the four main magazines online. If you want to get a paper magazine, there'll be an extra charge. 10 bucks, five bucks. I don't know what it would be. So for those of you who like a physical magazine, you'll still be able to get it, but it will cost you to get it though. Uh, because of the, the, the rising expenses. And, and that's the current thinking. Nothing has been settled. And as I said, I'd love to hear your opinion on, uh, on that. Um, I'm going to do something else. Does that answer your question? Uh, that was Joe?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's just fine. I was kind of just wanting to hear, uh, kind of what, what you might be hearing and that kind of thing. So, uh, yeah, appreciate it. Thanks very much, Art.
Well, I appreciate, just like everybody, you know, people are saying you like having a physical magazine. I do too. They're kind of fun. Just like I like paper Q S L cards. They're, they're um, a matter of fact, I just sent out 20 of them. I'm getting a little old to do that much writing, but you know, it, uh, it, it was great. Um, I'm going to do something for the fun of it. As long as we started the question, uh, I got, and that is, I'm going to launch a poll. Can everybody see the poll?
Yep.
All right. Start clicking people and you'll be able to see how often people want to have maga- have a, uh, oh, the power of being host of this meeting is amazing.
Yeah, the problem is I can't keep up with all the chat messages and questions that are coming. I'm making notes copiously quickly, but
Well, this is recorded, so you'll be able to watch the recording too. At, at the moment, 76% of you said quarterly, 22% monthly, 1% says every six months. So I think people, it looks like the majority of people are comfortable with, uh, quarterly. So we've, uh, 85% of you participated in the poll. That's a, that's a good showing. So I think quarterly is, if you're comfortable with that, it does take a lot of work putting it together and I appreciate that. All right. Let's get back to you, Dave.
Okay, wait, I'm trying to make sure I don't miss somebody's chat question. Um, okay, so a couple of very favorable comments saying that they love Q S T basically and are willing to pay extra for it. So yes, if you haven't read David Minster's latest editorial where he blocks that out, uh, please take a few minutes to, to read it and feel free to send an email off to David to let him know that you are in favor of and willing to pay for and value Q S T as a publication enough to be willing to pay for the additional cost. Because as Art mentioned, we are getting a bargain and I'm just going to give you a quick back of the envelope analysis. In 1968 or 69 or 70 timeframe, I think A R L membership was $12 a year. And a Volkswagen Beetle costs $2,000 a year. The low end of the car spectrum today, you probably can't get anything that runs as a new car, I'm only talking new car prices for $2,000. Excuse me, for $20,000. And that's 10 times what it was in 1970. So multiply 10 times $12. And at the very least, our membership should be $120 a year just to keep pace with inflation. So look at the bargain we're getting and the fact of the matter is that the bargain isn't helping us serve our membership fairly and adequately. Which is why David put this editorial together to talk about different options to help reduce some costs at A R L and allow us to use that money that we have to provide the services that you are asking for and that you need. So
I think, I think that's a wonderful argument. I agree with you, David. I didn't do that, uh, multiplication, but it's great. I, I want to answer one more of the que- uh, one more question that we, that came up and, and then we had a list of questions to go through, Dave, and I think given the time, it'd be good to get started on those. So one question came up from Glenn W nine I Q. He said, please discuss the operating budget deficit of the A double R L. The A double R L is currently running at about, I think, a $1 million deficit and maybe a $2 million deficit. I have, I have to look. Um, and, and that sounds terrible and it is. I mean, you, corporations can't go on with deficits. However, there were some people a few years ago that did something very wise. They put together a, uh, a fund, an endowment, endowment fund. And it's currently at the level of about $40 million. And the interest on that comes off at, at about, uh, 2 million or so a year, maybe a little bit more. And so the result of that is that makes up for the deficits. People were wise enough to make that investment. Uh, they're trying, their goal is to get that endowed fund up to 100 million. If they do, then, then we can weather a lot of storms. But no company can go, no organization could go on for a long time operating in a deficit, even with that backstop. So that's why we're talking about, should we raise dues? Another way to do that is increase membership. So you're going to see a lot of push at, uh, bringing on new members, providing services that are appropriate to bring them on and learning why only one out of five hams in the United States belong to the A double R L. I mean, you know, there, some people are freeloaders, some people don't know, some people don't care, but you know, we, we ought to and, and I do realize the argument that we probably are making a much better dent if we consider active hams rather than all licensed hams. But even so, we either ra- raise the membership, raise the dues and try to cut the deficit. But yeah, the deficit's a problem, but because of these clever people who put together this, this endowed fund, uh, we're okay, at least for a few years. Uh, sorry, Dave, to interrupt.
No, that, that's fine. And let me take the opportunity to say that I've been copying down the questions people are throwing at us through chat. We'll come back to them at the very end, but I'd like to kind of run through the agenda that Art and I put together, just so we don't miss some of the more significant items that we think we're seeing. So, uh, let's just start with field day. Field day is coming up in a few months and I would love to know what your perspective of field day is. Is it a training exercise? Is it a contest? I mean, literally a contest where you get your best C W ops sitting down at the back tables, running 35 words per minute and doing 90 Q so's an hour. Is it a social event? Where the families come out and everybody gets together, you set up one radio and run it off a battery. And if you have to make half a dozen contacts, that's great. You've met your objective. And I'm sure the spectrum goes from A to Z and further, probably goes from infinity on both sides. Okay. So we'd be very curious to hear some comments on, on what you're, what you're understanding and what you would like field day to be.
Well, I'm going to do something. I'm going to put together another one of those.
Oh, do it, do a survey. Yes, please do it.
Put in there is a contest, a social event, a public service, service event, a training event. Anything else you want to add to that list?
All of the above.
Okay, I like that.
Right.
Thank you whoever said that. All right, save that. This is magic and I'm launching the poll. Let's try this again. Click away. I think we found our answer.
Yeah, well, I, I, you're seeing it, I'm not.
Oh, you're not. I thought everyone.
No, I don't see the response come back. You're, you're in command.
I, I, I'll have to see how to set it up so you can all see it. Uh, uh, I'm sorry. I didn't do that.
It's all right.
We've got 87%. 7% of you think it's a social event. 3% of you think it's a public service event. 9% of you think it's a training event. And the winner is 79% says all the above. Thank you.
Okay. So
I have, I have a question if, if I might. Can it also be a recruitment effort, field day?
Yeah. Good comment. Dave, back to you. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to.
No, that's okay. That's, that's perfect. I'm, I'm just making notes here. Okay. Yeah. And yes, it certainly can be a recruitment event. In fact, um, one of the clubs here in, in St. Charles, Missouri, which is just adjacent to St. Louis, uh, actually was operating from a, a field adjacent to, it was either a Lowe's or a Home Depot anchored shopping center. And people were coming over. They, they had cleverly placed signs. Yeah, Tom, you know which club it was. Uh, they cleverly placed signs at the entrance to the parking lot, so the people coming in would see that as opposed to, you know, being buried in the backfield somewhere. So I think it worked very well for them. Uh, the other question we had related to field day is how you felt about, or how you would feel about changing the point values for contacts. You know, right now we have a weighted scale in favor of C W contacts. And you have three modes generally that are employed, C W, digital and phone. Are the typical modes. Some people may run ready, but there's not a lot of ready during field day. Uh, but that's still kind of falls in the digital category. So thoughts are, uh, and maybe Art, this is, uh, another opportunity for a quick survey. Would you be in favor of flattening the point distribution for field day so that a digital contact on F T eight is worth just as much as a phone or a C W contact? Or do you feel that C W is still a valued mode of operation from an M comms perspective or demonstration perspective? Or a training perspective, all the things that we just said about field day? And how would you like to see that? So I'll let Art go ahead and put that up.
I, I, I'm typing, uh, rap- as rapidly as I can. There was a question on, uh, uh, there've been a couple of chat questions or comments I thought were pretty good.
Well, I, I couldn't get to them while I was talking. I, I'm just opening them up now.
On field day is very good. And how does the A double R L envision that, uh, they can enhance the value of membership in order to increase the ranks? That came from Glenn W nine I Q. I, uh, I wish I could answer that. We all have ideas, uh, but there's actually a committee running, uh, headed by Fred, uh, Kimmerer, who's the, um, um, New England Division Director, a great guy. And, uh, they're answering that. They've got a whole bunch of ideas on how to do that. So, um, uh, stay tuned. Let me, uh, let's see. Okay, I'm going to run this poll. Let's see, can I see? I can't see how to let you all see it. Now, I, I'll learn that. But here's a poll flattened, more points for C W, more points for phone, more points for digital. We'd appreciate your thoughts.
If I may, I think you should be able to post the poll results. I think there should be an option for that.
Yeah, I'm looking for that. And when we stop this one, I'll take another look, but we've got 76% in at the moment. It's 40% flattened. Forty, yeah, 45% more for C W, 10% more for phone. Uh, and 5% more for digital. Let me see. Oh, share results. There, can you guys see that?
Yes.
Okay, now I know. Thank you.
Now we see it.
Thank you for ever suggested that. It's interesting. It ends up that there are more contacts, not points, more contacts made on C W than any other mode in the past few decades of, uh, I can't say that, probably went back 10 years of field days. And of course, many more points because it gets more points than, uh, the one point for, uh, phone. So we seem to have already accomplished what we set out to do, and that is to make sure the C W stayed important. So, um, it's something we need to talk about. We'll, we'll think about that. I, I, I wish I had a better answer for Glenn on the, uh, A double R L i- i- envisioning how we can increase the value. There are people working on that. There's some good ideas out there at the moment. Um, I don't want to really talk about them because we want to see what develops and give that team a chance to, uh, to take care of it, but you'll be hearing about it. It's, uh, you know, one of the things that we really appreciate is Dave Minister, our new, uh, CEO is just dynamite. And he's, uh, redoing the organization. He's getting people to think about the future. He's looking at what really works and what enhances the, uh, A double R L versus what doesn't really provide the value that, that we need. So you're going to see a lot of change and I, I'm thinking maybe our next town hall, I'll ask David Minister to take part. So he can answer those questions and you can find out directly. Um, we had David meeting with our, uh, uh, division cabinet and he was supposed to stay for an hour and he stayed two and a half hours with us answering questions and asking us questions and getting ideas. So he's true. I can't tell you how much I appreciate him as the CEO. Uh, Dave, back to you.
Okay, thank you, Art. Uh, and, and thanks for everybody for, for answering and responding to the survey. I, I think that's, it's really great. Uh, Art, you know, I'm going to take the things that I had here and then I'm going to turn it over to you and where you can pick up the ones that are for you and, and we don't have to go back and forth too much. Um, okay, following is a paid political announcement courtesy of the Boeing Employees Amateur Radio Society, St. Louis, Missouri. Don't forget, coming your way, April 1st and 2nd, the Missouri Q so party on all bands. D C to daylight. No, I'm just kidding, but seriously, the Missouri Q so party is coming up on May, April 1st and 2nd. Please join us in having a lot of fun on this contest and, uh, hope that we all see you there. And, uh, you know, this is a contest where the, uh, club station at Boeing W zero M A uh, is worth 100 points if you work the club station. And, uh, we will have that station firing on all eight cylinders this year and it's a large station. So please, um, join us in the fun, join us in the fray, even if you just get in to say hi. Uh, but we hope you join us. Uh, I know I've had some fun jumping in just to make a half a dozen contacts and and our other division section Q so parties, because I don't always have time to spend, uh, hours and hours on it, but I do try to get in and make a few contacts and it's always lots of fun. Um, Midwest Division Newsletter. So we've talked about that again. Thank you for your inputs. I've got them all, I believe. And, um, I hope that you, uh, appreciate the effort that Art and I put into putting the newsletter together because it does take a little bit of editing and time to sort through everything. So thank you for your patience. Um, and by the way, the survey came back that, uh, I think most folks were happy with the quarterly newsletter. Was that it right? Am I remembering correctly? So, uh, unless told otherwise, we'll probably hang with that for the moment. And, uh, okay, uh, Midwest Division Convention. The one that I couldn't go to, which I sorely missed. Uh, first of all, a shout out for the Midwest Division Convention to the St. Louis Suburban Radio Club, who did an excellent job of staging the Hamfest as they always do and hosting our convention. And to David Minster and a two A A who traveled from headquarters as our CEO to, uh, speak at the, uh, Ham Fest and Convention Dinner on Friday evening. And also speak with many members that came by the A R L booth on Saturday. And also a shout out to the Central Division Director Carl Lutzel Swab, who filled in for me and staffed the, the, uh, A R L booth and also handled the A R L forum along with Roy Beebe, uh, W nine R Y, who is the Illinois Section Manager. So those guys really stepped in to fill the vacancy that I created. And, uh, we really appreciate it. So a question for you is, um, if you have any thoughts as to where the Midwest Division Convention should be held?
Oh, now wait a minute. That was my question, Dave.
I added down as mine.
Oh, hey, 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 no, wait a minute. I'm the director. Remember you're the vice director.
Like I said, guys, it's just like Congress. All right.
I'm kidding. What, what, what I've done is I've actually put together a poll.
Good, good, good.
Poll says, where should the division convention be? Always one location, rotate amongst the sections, always held in a central location. And if you have any other questions, David, I should have put in, I can do that again.
No, that's it. We're good. We're good. Thank God for the surveys. Okay, so, um, and I'll keep looking at the chat questions and we'll come back to those, but Art, why don't you go ahead and pick up the topics?
That you're going to speak to. I'll do that, but I do want to address K E zero V P A said, who cares about field day points? I would think the issue at hand is getting interest in ham radio and new members. Yeah, you're right. That's, that's the priority. And certainly field day is, is one way to do that. And I appreciate your comments. Um, yes, and, and there was a comment from, uh, uh, Lee Garner. He says, section managers will be meeting with the A double R L this Friday to enhance the club's ability to, uh, uh, access this membership benefit through joint, uh, of joining through clubs. So, yeah, the good things will be happening and uh, stay tuned. Uh, on, you know, we're going to save the chat. So any comments in there that we don't get to, we don't notice, we'll try to answer and we'll try to answer that either in the newsletter or through an email. So, uh, please, uh, feel free to keep sharing. Okay. Here's the results. Rotates amongst the sections and that's what we're thinking, you know, within the division cabinet. Uh, that seems to make sense. Here's the results. Rotates amongst the sections and that's what we're thinking, you know, within the division cabinet. Uh, that seems to make sense. We've got some fun things planned. Uh, for example, we're thinking about, this is, don't, don't hold me to this, but we're thinking about, uh, the twenty twenty-four convention. If we pull it off, we'll be in Nebraska and Lincoln because amongst other things, there's a brand new incredibly interesting site at Branch Stoke. Where they have, uh, not only a telescope and observatory, but Earth move, Earth Station, a ham station. And so we'll make that part of the convention. I think people will be interested in that.
And I would like to point out that that's family friendly.
Yes, it's family friendly. Yep, I think I shared this, so I'm gonna put it away. But we appreciate the support there. I see we're at eight twenty. Uh, I, I'm not, I don't think we're gonna make, uh. We're gonna make our hour, but let's see, Lloyd Colson said the officers should be where the majority of the voters elect them from. I'm not sure I understand that, but if you want to come out and talk about it, that would be great. And where are we picking up? My pieces are. I, I wanted to comment, make a quick comment. Oh, DXCC, a quick question for you guys. Um. And that is. You know, the, the, the Bouvet Island, if you've been following the Bouvet Island, uh, uh. DX location was very dangerous. People not only had a lot, I mean, we literally were risking lives. Setting up the station. There was also impact to the ecology of the location. Uh, there have been other sites where, where, uh, people have had to go through real hardship to get the site on the air. So one of the things that's been proposed is, what if you were on a ship? That was within the territorial waters of the site, whatever that site is. Shouldn't that count as a, as the same DX location? Uh, the other option that people suggested is they take a pack, a, a remote station, put it on the shore or somewhere. And, and, you know, and set it up and then retreat to their ships and operate remotely through their ships in order to try to stay safe. So one of the things that we're kind of curious about for those of you that are interested in DXCC and DXing. Um, and I will make another poll for those who are interesting. And this is exciting now that I've learned how to do this, but, um. So my question is, okay to be in territorial. Waters. For DX. Site. And I'm gonna put two things, yes. No. And I'm gonna put maybe, which means if you want to think about this more, maybe there's some combination, but give me your thoughts real quick. Oops, I didn't do that. There we go. Maybe I should have added, I don't care. Oh, this is interesting. Okay. So. Thirty-eight percent yes, twenty-four percent no, and thirty-nine percent said maybe. Now, those of you who said maybe, one or two of you, why did you say maybe?
Lloyd Colston. My maybe came as a result of considering the, uh, territorial waters issue. Uh, because territorial waters, depending on the country, uh, stretches out, uh, seven miles to over that. Uh, and then the, uh. Other part of my maybe was the issue of, um, will it count? Uh, as being inside the territorial waters because there's some countries. That you cannot transmit unless you have reciprocal license from that place.
Well, I think that's right, and you'd have to follow those rules. And I think maybe territorial waters is a little too broad. Maybe it's with a, a, a mile or. Two miles of the site, you can specify that. But the idea is that, uh. It seems like most people wouldn't be uncomfortable with avoiding having people risk their lives to put these, these, uh, DX locations on the air. But if you have more comments, put it in chat, write me, let me know. I appreciate that. At this point. I think we're gonna, Dave, do you have anything specific you want to bring up or we'll just open it up to the crowd?
Uh, you wanted to talk a little bit about new hams?
Oh, new hams. I was gonna make a comment and this is a short one. You know, one of the things that I like doing when I give my talks at Hamfest and the clubs is show videos of young hams. There are some young hams doing incredible things from working satellites, building stations, building robots. Yeah, that, that excite me and, and get, keep me from worrying about the hobby as much as I did. Most of us on this call, you know, are, are not as young as we were at once, we're, we're older. Our median age is, uh, fairly high. But there is a incredible group of young people coming along. I, I, I was appointed or elected onto the A double R L Foundation Board, um, at the January meeting. And what we're doing now is we're going through giving away five hundred thousand dollars worth of scholarships. Actually, we'll be giving away more. So we've been looking at, uh, applications and I got a chance to interview six young people looking for, uh, scholarships. And I'll tell you, they are outstanding. And, uh. Uh, you know, these are bright people. They're, they're in the hobby for all the reasons we're in the hobby. They're building things. They're, um. You know, and I just got to tell you, I came away feeling really good and, and, and that's nice to know. And I wanted to pass that on all to you as there's a lot of hope. There's a, uh, comment here, was anybody killed from DX, uh, expeditions? And the answer is yes. And it was a strange one. I forgot where it was. And basically the border police shot the, uh, DXers and they went away.
Um, Bradley Islands and it was a German DX expedition shot by the Chinese military.
Right. Let's see, Lloyd, you've got your hand up.
Speaking of young hams, uh, Amateur Radio Newsline has their Young Hams on the Air, uh. Scholarship money award, uh, application period is currently open. And don't forget Quarter Century Wireless Association also does a college scholarship for amateur radio. Um, operators who aren't old enough to be QCWA members.
Well, that's great. Thanks for bringing that up and, and keep watch for the A double R L scholarships. If you know, young people who are hams. Uh, it's a neat opportunity. The A double R L gives away between, uh. By, uh, two thousand and, and twenty-five thousand dollars and sky, to each scholarship winner. So it's a, it, it's a big deal. We've run through our topics, uh, that we have. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to you. Please raise your hand. Um, if you'd like, uh, or speak up and let me know you'd like to talk. And we'd love to hear from you. Uh, Lloyd, you've had a chance here. So let me see if anybody else comes first. Anybody else here want to raise their hand or say anything? Questions, comments, complaints?
K zero R C J.
Okay, why don't we go with you then? Richard, right?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, Richard Johnson, K zero R C J, VK six J N S from here in McPherson. Uh, Kansas. Um. I believe I approached this with you one time before about the card checkers. Uh, as it stands right now, uh, even for worked all states, the card checker has to, uh. Have obtained both, uh, worked all states and DXCC to be a card checker. Um. I'd like to see it addressed. Why can't an extra ham? That has worked all states at least on one band, if not multiple. Uh, be considered to be a card checker because they're, uh, I don't know about other places where I'm at. They're scarce as hen's teeth. And, uh, I'd, I'd like to, uh, you know, maybe have your thoughts or other people's thoughts on that if I might. Thank you.
I, I think that's a very good question. Um. And that's something we really have to look at. I, I tried to get it so that we could take pictures of cards and send them in to, uh, card checkers. And so we avoid having to physically send the cards. Right now, of course, you can send your cards physically to the headquarters and get them checked. Uh, we tried to get more, um, card checkers in place. Uh, people, uh, who live in more dense urban areas. Don't understand how big our territory is in the Midwest Division and how hard it is to get card checkers all over. We've added some card checkers, so it should be a little bit easier. Uh, opening up to. Uh, for WAS to any, uh, say extra class ham who has already got WS is an interesting idea. I certainly, uh, wouldn't mind bringing that up. Uh, I don't know. Uh. The, the whole thing people are worried about is cheating. And of course, cheating on WAS is probably not the same as, uh, embezzling from the bank. Uh, you know, so I think we can treat it differently. I appreciate your comment, Richard, and, uh, we'll, uh, we'll add it to our list. Uh, let's see, uh, Matt, I think you had your hand up next.
Yeah, thanks, Art. Uh, I, I know this has been a, a topic of discussion. Um. The DXCC, you know, I think is, is something that, uh, probably needs a good top to bottom review. Um, uh, you know, the technology here has really, uh, come through at a very rapid pace and has been ever changing. And, uh, I, I think some of the, uh, uh, portions of the A double RL. Uh, maybe have not kept pace. And I know a lot of changes are happening overall. I think it'd be good if we could do a, a really a top to bottom review of, of, uh, the, the contests, the, the rules. Uh, DXCC is, I think, one of the cornerstones really of amateurial besides, you know, WAS. And of course, you got county hunters and so forth, but. I think the manner in which we go about them, what really constitutes a DX entity. Uh, legitimate, legitimate legitimacy about safety. Uh, and then also what is considered to be sovereign territory. That's probably maybe the biggest thing right there is. If we have a, a boue day. And we can't really get on there safely, but we'd still like to keep it. So what, what exceptions are made? What that still keep within the spirit of it without risking life and limb. And I think, you know, getting reasonably close, being within the territorial waters. Uh, anything from maybe dropping a remote box on the island and you're within a half a mile of the, you know, you have to have. Uh, sight of the land that which you're communicating to, because it's really about where the transmitter is located. So, uh, obviously passions on both sides of it, but I think it certainly warrants a discussion. I'd hate to see a, a, a rapid change being made, but I think a change needs to occur of some kind. And, uh, you know, we've got a hundred and eighteen people on here with a hundred and eighteen different ideas. So anyway, just, just my two cents worth and, and, uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you, Matt. Good comments. I, I noticed some interesting comments here. Does a WAS or DXCC mean as much now? When using FT eight as compared to CW or phone. It's interesting, the thing about these technology changes. If I have the latest super duper speech processor on my transmitter that makes my voice three D bit better than yours. Does that mean that I can compete equally? Does it mean I should be a different category? Technology always changes. So I, I think this is a good discussion. Uh, to me DXCC always demonstrated how well you set up your station. My, now, did I design my antenna, put it up? Did I, did I get my transmitter set up correctly? Now, do my receivers tuned up as they should be? So it's demonstration of how good I am. And so you gotta worry about, what about people who buy into remote stations? What does that demonstrate for a DXCC for their call? Um, I think there's a lot of good questions. Matt, you're right. There's a DX, um. Uh, advisory committee that considers this and, uh, a lot of them hang on to the way it's been in the past. I hate saying that. Uh, yes, and PSC, the committee that, uh, Dave and I are on, uh, do review what the contests are. And suggestions are really appreciated. If you've got some concrete ideas that we can change things, um. That would be great from all of you. I want to keep going here and pick up people. Unfortunately, I can't tell the order in which you raise your hand.
I can help you out with that, Art. W zero VMP Vern Werka is next. Go ahead and unmute.
Oh, you're very good. Thank you, Vern. Go ahead.
All right, uh, thank you, uh, and good evening to everyone. I want to say, uh, thank you, Art and Dave for your, uh, leadership. In particular, I just wanted to say thank you for the, uh, uh, A double RL Foundation. I'm still the advisor for the W zero Q Q Q Radio Club at Kansas State University. And because of that, uh, grant that we were able to obtain, we are in the rebuilding process. I mean, COVID took a toll. But, uh, there is interest in art. I appreciate your comments. The, the young people. Uh, yeah, they're fantastic. Uh, we, we need to reach out better to them, but, uh, they are there. They have lots of, uh, good ideas. And the, uh, foundation taking that step to, uh, encourage and permit us to, uh, uh, continue. Very, very much, uh, uh, appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vern. It's nice to hear success stories. I really, really appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, Lee, who's next?
Yep, KG zero Y J Bill. You go ahead and unmute.
Can you hear me okay?
Perfect.
Oh, great. Uh, well, I, I appreciate the meeting too. I think it's, uh, I was very excited to get the email. And I'm glad to be here at the meeting and see, uh, as many people hams as I can on the Zoom. Uh, I just wanted to encourage, uh, ARRL to continue, uh, working towards, uh. Eliminating barriers for hams to have antennas. Uh, I, I've lived, uh, I became a ham in late ninety-four, joined ARRL. I thought, uh, I'd get a three-year membership because I could save money. I guess having an accounting degree from Eastern Berkeley caused this, this kind of thinking. But after three years, I said, well, yeah, I like this ham radio. So then I got a life membership and, uh. I wanted worked all states. And I got it. Alaska was last. And then I wanted DXCC a hundred. And I got it. And, uh, you know, I went to the bureau. So, some cards would come in like two years later, so it was an effort and I appreciate it, but. I know ARRL can work on the national level and, uh, you know, state level, but these barriers to having antennas. My wife and I have lived in five houses in the last eleven years. Uh, one of the houses was perfect. It, it had, uh, rules. The subdivision had four hundred houses. They had the rules from sixty-four, nineteen sixty-four. And you could put, uh, this is before I, as a ham, I moved there, but you could put an antenna eight feet above the crest line of your roof. You know, once I got interested in ham, I realized I'm high atop a ridge. I got a two-story house. And all my antennas, uh, like a Mosley and this and that, were all eight feet above the, uh, top of my house and worked great. Uh, I moved to another subdivision. They had no rule against antennas. I thought I'd be treasurer for three years, kind of prove I'm a nice guy. And then at the end of three years, the outlawed antennas. And I hadn't put anything up, so. I, I learned, uh, that, that again is covenant. Uh, but now I live in a tiny city of five hundred people here in Missouri and, uh. I, I did know this before I moved here. The city says you can't have a tower. No towers in this city of five hundred people. Now, uh. So I'm getting big polls. I'm gonna use big polls. But anyway, I like to be encouraged to know what I might do to write this congressman or that congressman. Because I think it's a real barrier to hams that have been around and new hams, that there's so many rules against us.
Bill, I think that, uh, you need to know about PRB one because I think that would cover your city. They, they can't prevent you from putting up an antenna. And if.
Yeah, it's just unfortunate you have to, uh, you know, fight, you know, like, I get.
There are people in A double R L who can help you with that. Have you reached out to quarters?
No, I've been looking into thick polls.
Well, it's up to you, but if you want to send me an email, k zero A I Z at A double R L dot org, I'll get you the right people.
Okay. But yeah, that's a, that's a pretty bad, uh, example of what can happen. But I just want to be encouraged by ARRL if I can write, you know, to somebody. Uh, to help the effort. I know you work on it and I'd like to help the effort, but we all get busy. So sometimes we don't, uh.
Sure.
Take note of what we can do.
But for that particular issue, that talent, that, that should be covered by PRB.
Thank you. Thank, great idea. Appreciate it.
I, I, I'm getting old, so if you don't remind me, but send me a note and I'll get you in touch with the right people. I'd be, uh, thank you so much, Bill.
Oh, you're welcome.
Lloyd dropped out here. Lloyd, are you still here? Did you want to raise your topic?
A couple of things, yes. Um. I read the annual report and the fiscal health of ARRL looks good on paper. Um, but with inflation being what it is and, uh, the silent keys dying off like I see on QST. Um, what is the reality of the fiscal health of, um. ARRL and I think we all should work harder to get more members. Uh, so I'll make that editorial comment. Uh, so what's the physical health of ARRL today?
Well, like I said, I think it's actually pretty good. Uh, we, because of this, this endowed fund we have that keeps us afloat. But you brought up a very good point. You know, people are dying off, we're getting older. So that's, uh, that's in the consideration. There's a whole group of people working about, worrying about. What do we do to bring in more people so that, uh, we can keep the, keep things successful? Uh, good question. You'll be hearing a lot more about it. So stay tuned, Lloyd. And if, of course, if you have ideas, let us know. We'll pass them on. Uh, Lee, who's next?
Uh, we got K zero TCB.
Okay, chat, it's your turn.
He was unmuted a minute ago. K zero TCB chat.
Oh, while, while we got a minute, Art, just remember to come back to me because I got a couple of chats that I don't think we. Oh, while while we got a minute, Art, just remember to come back to me, because I got a couple of chats that I don't think we've answered their questions for.
Okay.
Well, let's do one, let's do one more hand and then go to chat.
Yeah, we gave it a try, so is Rick next? Let's let's try Rick.
Zero FND. Okay, this is my first time at this, so can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, I haven't had my license two years. And I had a heck of a time getting it, because I couldn't find anything, even from ARL's website. But my, the wall that I'm running into, because I've been trying to do a lot of things. I've done a few meet and greets already. I started a website, Western Nebraska, hamradio.com. And it's a slow slug, not much. Comments, but we do have a little bit of support from a few of the individuals out here. But the thing that just gets me more than anything, when I go bowling with the old people in the senior league. Ninety percent of them have no clue what amateur radio is. And the younger people I run into, not the kids, but younger people have no clue what amateur radio is. I even got asked by one young lady is, oh, what kind of music do you play? So I think that's where, to be blunt, they've dropped the ball. Their PR to the public has been horrible, particularly in Western Nebraska for years. And I'm a transplant. So I've been in the big cities. This is the small city for me. And people are different everywhere, but I'm amazed. That the imprint or the impression amateur radio should have had over the years with public service. And most people have no clue what it even is. So that's what I gotta say, and I'll back out. Because it's about time for us to have a local net. But thanks for doing it, and maybe you can look into that next time.
Rick, I think it's a excellent comment. You're right. I think it depends on where you live, too. In Lincoln, uh, people know about ham radio, but it's mostly because of storm spotting. So I mean, it makes us, makes the public very aware of who we are. But it's a good point. We need to be a better job with of getting the word out there about ham radio. And um, you might want to talk with Matt Anderson, your uh Nebraska section manager, see about maybe what, how you can get involved in helping us in that that quest. But thank you very much for the comment. Let's see. Uh. Lee, I I'm gonna take Ron unless you think there's somebody else.
I don't know. I think Dave had a couple from the chat that he wanted to go to.
Yeah, this is chat. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we hear you, chat. Go ahead.
Well, I can't get my video to work, and I'm very disappointed in that, because I feel very excited about this Ham Bash. It's coming up. And April the fifteenth in Kansas City. It's put on by the Shriners. And of course, as you know, it benefits the Shriners Hospitals. Hiram Percy Maxim is gonna make an appearance. And he's gonna be carrying, and I wish I had my video working, a Wolfhound. And he's gonna point that Wolfhound at these young whippersnappers that are keying repeaters and doing bad things. And it's gonna be fun. There will be a presentation, a forty-minute presentation of all of the Midwest Division Director's staff. Like tonight, you can come and talk to them in person and shake your hand. April the fifteenth. Kansas City Shrine Temple, Air Red Shrine, www.hambash.us. www.hambash dot united Sierra, tickets, tables, come to Kansas City. We'd love to have you. There's gonna be biscuits and gravy, chili dogs, and hiram. Thank you, Lee.
Hey, thank you, chat. I'm looking forward to that. It's one of my favorite Hamfests. Uh, let's see, who's next, Lee?
Uh, we'll go ahead and do the the last one uh from uh the hand raised is Ron Upton in Kansas. And call sign WB zero W S I. Go ahead and go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, more for Bill and everybody on the, you know, I'm getting ready to go next month before the board. Local board here to talk to them about the antenna and tower heights, dealing with amateur radio. And I've got a packet on that. And Bill, I sent you a text message. If you'll send me your email, I'll get you some information that I'm gonna present to this board. Because they have a thirty-five foot from ground restriction in this town. That's it. That's all I had to say.
Well, thank you, Ron. Thanks for your comment. I think we're we're back to Dave. Is that right?
Yeah, I think there's one more, but we can wait. Let's go to Dave.
Okay, well, just there were a couple of questions, and I don't necessarily have the answers to them. Uh, Marty W zero Z Z K asked about the update to the National Traffic System, what we're loving lovingly called version two point O. Uh, so either Lee, maybe you're close to that, or Art, uh, I I don't want to speak uh from my vague memory of what was discussed. At the board meeting on this. I know it's in work, but I don't know where it stands.
Well, it's not even the work. I took part in discussions on it. It it's moving forward and doing well, but I think the best thing to do is uh maybe at our next uh. Uh, town hall, I'll invite Fred Kimmer uh.
Yeah.
The North uh New England Division, who's heading that effort to talk to with us about it. So uh, if there are people you, you know, if there's areas like that of interest, I mean, I think it'd be a lot of fun to invite uh. Uh, David Minster and uh Fred Kimmer, and they can answer the questions directly then, rather than Dave and I working through our feeble memories. So I think we'll take a pass.
I can add a little bit. We just had a meeting on it last night.
Yeah, that, oh, that's right. Go ahead, Lee.
Yep. Okay, so I've gone to every meeting that they've had so far. I am not on one of the working groups. Because I just don't have the bandwidth to join them, but I'm in full support of NTS two point O. And what that is, it's a reboot of the old NTS um National Traffic System. That was a program of the A double R L that has not been very active since about twenty sixteen. There are other groups do carry traffic across the US, but this is as a program of the A double R L. And um, they do have a website now, and that is NTS two. So that's November Tango Sierra. Two dot A double R L dot O R G. And that's just was put up, I think, this week. Um, but it looks like it's up and running. Um, I do believe in a nutshell, their goal. Is to make uh traffic uh available to the average person across the US. It sounds like a big goal, but um they really want to make sure that there's a good backbone and that it's accessible. So they're gonna be looking at training and things like that. So, but it's gonna be a year or two long process to get everything up and going. And if you want to join in and um help out, do contact them. And Fred Kimmerer, do you remember his? I don't remember his call sign. But that's all I've got. Signing.
Thanks, Lee. No, I appreciate that. That's a great info. Okay, uh, the next question came from Jared N zero Sugarpopa Charlie. He asked about repeater directory updates. And you know, the fact that the hard copy book is only published once a year. Uh, if I remember correctly, Jared, the online directory and the service that you can sign up for. If you are going to download data into your radio through a pro software program like RT Systems or so. Or the Yesu software. Uh, when you download that, that data is relatively up to date. Um, I haven't done it in a while, so I can't tell you how up to date it is or not up to date. But you know, ARL has switched over to not providing the DVD or CD-ROM that they used to provide. They now direct you to this online system that you pay for separately, which is done by uh another company.
Okay, well, I'm looking, I'm looking at the time, Dave. We've got.
Yeah.
Really want in by nine, so.
Okay, well. All right, there was just one other question from Dave, uh W zero FLS about digital DXCC awards. And and David, I think the the best way to answer that is this is something that is being discussed. Within the Programs and Services Committee. The topic actually came up at our January committee meeting. Uh, but it's still in study at this point. No decisions have been reached. I think I've covered everybody that I caught, every question.
One more, one more in the uh with the hands raised.
I think, Bill, you have your hand up. Did you just?
My mistake, sorry.
Okay, perfect.
All right. Thank you very much, Lee. I appreciate your help with this. I want to thank uh Steve Ewald. You're still here somewhere. There you are, Steve. Do you want to say anything to the group before we end?
Oh, oh, thank you for the invitation. It's been uh very uh informative. And I've enjoyed uh uh hearing and seeing uh so many folks here from the Midwest Division. I recognize many call signs and correspond with uh many of you and know you personally, so it's great to be here. So thank you very much for all your support of ARRL. It's a pleasure of being here. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Steve, very much. Well, we're uh, we went a lot longer than I thought we would. There are many more people here than I thought we'd have. I want to thank all of you. Uh, it means a lot to both Dave and me that you're here. Uh. You know, we volunteer a lot of time, and we do it because this hobby is so important to us that we want to make sure it's uh. It's good for everybody. So we're available by by email. My, our phone numbers are published in QST. Get in touch with us, email us. If there are questions you have that you thought about that you would uh like to ask us, please do that. If you have comments or suggestions, send that to us. And uh, with that, I'm gonna ask David to make any last comments, and uh, thank you all for being here. Uh, Dave?
Well, thank you, Art, and and thank you to Lee for helping out. Thank you, Steve, because remember, guys, Steve's on the East Coast. It's already an hour later for him, and he's already worked a full day at ARRL HQ. So, Steve, thanks a lot. Uh, one of the questions raised, Art, just now was where will we make the recording of this available? And how would we do that? So when we figure that out, perhaps we can send a link out to everybody.
Yeah, I I have a personal YouTube site, and I will put it up there as a uh. Uh, unlisted, which means you have to have the link to see it, and I'll mail that out to the division email list, so.
Right, great. All right. Well, I just want to thank everybody for coming. I mean, we peaked at 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 least a hundred and twenty-one people on at one time. Which means there were more people than that participating, because some people left early, some people came late. Uh, so, but the peak number at any one time was one twenty-one. That's really great. So I hope we've been able to answer some of your questions. We look forward. I know Art and I look forward to meeting you. Uh, as the year goes on, you know, hopefully meeting you in person around the Hamfest. And uh, please, if you have any questions, as Art said, just email or call us. We're that easy to get a hold of. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Anybody want to make any last comments?
Great job, guys.
Uh, thank you, Dave.
Okay, thank, thank you also very much for this. I think it's gonna make a huge difference to not only the division, but possibly if it's picked up by uh. Uh, other divisions, it could make a difference uh within the ARRL itself. So thank you very much, and I enjoyed it.
I'm glad you did. Thank you so much. It's all part of the effort to be closer to our members, and I I appreciate that. Okay, I'm gonna wish you all good night. I thank you for all the very positive comments we received on the chat. Uh, we'll we'll save those, too, and uh, thank you for being here. The next one will probably be within the next quarter. Uh, so I'm thinking June, but we'll we'll send out a note and make that happen. As I said, we'll invite some interesting people the next time. I mean, more interesting than us. No, I didn't mean that. Anyway, I'll let you guys go. Have a very pleasant evening, and thank you so much.
Everybody have a good evening.